This might be the end.
You have a tendency to sound like it's a chipbook.
Well, that was always a joke with the sound man on set. You have to be nice to the sound man and he'd make you sound like a chipbook. That was back when I was six foot tall in good nature.
I'm five five and I paint the ass.
Yeah. Pretty much. Just ask Orion, he'll tell you.
Oh my gosh, he's red. I didn't realize.
Sure metal.
Goodness. All right, here, so far we've got some time. Pass this down. You guys could all touch it and feel it. That's proposed material on the front.
Right.
Is that right? This is the proposed material on the front, Bill, right? Material on the front of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Home project.
Okay. I don't even want to see it before. So Joe, we're gonna go whenever you are.
Oh, you are, okay. Here, just pass this, this one you get. Same two.
I got the space.
All right. Okay. One second here. Okay, I'm ready. What's that? Go. Yes, on, okay. Good evening. My name is Joe Strenawski, Chair of the Rockport Planning Board. We have enough members here this evening for quorum, so I'm officially calling this meeting to order on Thursday, April 25th at 5:35 PM. Planning Board is comprised of volunteers appointed at the discretion of the Select Board. Our charge is to ensure that the applications that come before us comply with the town's land use ordinance and Rockport comprehensive plan. The board must determine whether there's sufficient evidence in the record, which is the material supplied by the applicant, to support a decision to approve the application. This is accomplished by comparing that material in the record to the requirements of the ordinance. And so tonight, the only item on the agenda is a continuance from our prior meeting in March. And let's see, we have all the members that were here last week, so we shouldn't have any new conflicts of interest unless something surfaced in last month. Any conflicts of interest? Seeing none, okay. Public comments we received during our previous meeting, so we will not be accepting public comments tonight. I do understand from Orion that we have no written comments provided after the meeting at any rate. So with that, let's go ahead and proceed. So this is a continuance, consideration of site plan review.
Are they having technical difficulties, Bill?
Your audio's coming through.
Can he not hear us?
Yeah, I guess not.
Oh, you can hear me in the meeting?
Yes, I can.
You wanna try to rectify that?
Has the meeting started?
Yeah, Joe was just introducing the agenda.
So let's take a pause here and let's see if we can rectify the audio on the Team Link.
So yeah, they're gonna work through anything that might be tough technically, buzzy if they have any.
So there's no?
Further issues. It's just to confirm you can't hear them.
Yeah, he's not, he's not getting any audio through Teams.
John?
So we can hear him, but he can't hear his battery.
Oh, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's what Jeff said.
He doesn't, by chance, have mute on or anything?
It might be his own audio, I don't know for sure.
No, he would.
He can't mute audio, right. He can mute his own audio home.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Right.
But also, if he doesn't know that the meeting started, does that mean there's no video to it?
He can see it, he just can't hear us.
He can't hear.
Okay, so I'm gonna pause till we rectify our technical challenges here.
I'm not sure he can get that.
No?
So he can hear, so he can, he can see, but he can't hear.
Is he talking to you in the chat? Chat, 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 chat.
So if I, if I turn my, my audio on on my computer, that'll create that.
Yeah. Of course, Jeff didn't foresee this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there a way that we could do this on a different streaming channel? Other than Microsoft Teams now, can't do it on YouTube or anything?
Well, John, he, John can, I don't know if John can hear me or not, but what he could do is he could log into YouTube. He can watch the YouTube and then.
Text me comments or?
Yeah.
Talk through, just talk through.
Or he can call in on your phone.
But I mean, he's, his audio's fine, he just leaves the team side up, he can have the other side.
I see what you're saying.
He can still talk through it the way we've got it, he just needs to be able to hear what's going on.
Does that make sense? You can call more quick, that'd be easier.
I guess I might as well take this. It's Tom, maybe there's another issue in this show. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, okay. On Teams, or on Teams, or on, on YouTube? Yeah, yeah, the problem is that we're trying to work the other party through Teams, that Microsoft Teams, that's why. Okay, thanks for the info, Bill. Bye. Tom just followed us, know that he can hear us on YouTube, which I think we know. Okay, so can we continue then? We'll wait until he gets connected through YouTube and see if that works out. So wait for Bill to confirm that for us if we can.
So the only, the only issue we're having is with the applicant being able to.
Yeah, that's kind of important.
Do we need to approve minutes and can we do that in the interim?
Do we have minutes?
No.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
I just sent you the link.
No, I've just read the agenda that was put out with the things.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, it's more weird. Sorry.
It's okay, I just making sure we aren't missing something we're supposed to do.
Thank you.
There we go. All right, forward to that link. I'm not the poke the bear, but I had seen that Scott Vlasic was on the Teams. Does he still show up for you?
Yeah, I got Scott on here.
Okay.
Is that colored panel?
Ranked them from 1 to 24. Hi, so I sent you a, can you hear me all right? Good. Yeah, so that YouTube link would not have interactive capabilities, so they're suggesting that you, without creating feedback hopefully, listen on YouTube and speak on Teams. And stay muted as much of the time as you can, I guess would be. Yep, and can you just confirm when you're able to be in so that they can proceed? Good deal, thanks, Joe. Bye.
Okay, we think he's got it, we'll just wait.
He understands his, his orders and hopefully he'll be able to confirm he's got it all good.
All right.
Just, we just can't sit in silence because he'll hold on to YouTube, he's not able to hear us.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just gotta check that it says, yes, he's in now.
Okay, so hopefully he could hear us on YouTube, okay.
Yeah, Peter flipped.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and restart here, the beginning of the meeting. Referring to the agenda as one of my colleagues so correctly pointed out, the second item is to approve minutes, we do not have any minutes to approve this evening, so we'll go ahead and proceed to item three. Item three is a continuance of a site plan that we reviewed in our March meeting, and there were a few items that were open on that, and we're gonna come back around and review those items. So the site plan review is, site plan review is a continuance for the property located at 1075 Commercial Street, Rockport, and is identified as map 002, lot 169. This property is under a purchase and sale agreement between VIP, the buyer, and JL Enterprise LLC, the current owner, and is being represented this evening by William Lane of Gartley and Dorsky. So with that, Orion, you've got the document that was submitted, and Bill, I'll ask you to please just walk us through a little bit what you got there, it was pretty self-explanatory, but if there's any color you'd like to add to it.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, I'm Bill Lane from Gartley and Dorsky Engineering and Surveying, also present tonight via Zoom, or Teams, excuse me, hopefully is John Quirk and Scott Vlasic, the project architect. And just the recently submitted materials include documentation that one of the member entities of the VIP family has actually purchased the property now, so that deed has been provided to you, and so the owner of the property, Main Central Properties LLC, is the fee owner of the property, and Main Central Properties is affiliated company under the Quirk family. In addition, we were asked to provide some clarity on the existing conditions of the former restaurant building itself, which I've provided a photo sheet that indicates that exterior facade material, which is a drive-it type of product that has got a mortar-applied stucco-type finish on it. In addition, I brought in a physical sample of the proposed siding, which is still a textured metal panel, but this is a smooth panel with a stucco-like appearance on a, on a metal panel, and that different condition is also annotated on the revised plan prepared by Scott Vlasic that shows for the facade facing the road and then wrapping around the corner, that textured panel applied before it transitions over to a more conventional red-to-metal siding for the finish of the, of the building. It also depicts the revision to the front facade that was reviewed in our last meeting in March to include breaking the roof line as well as the forward plane of the garage addition with a elevated section, and he's annotated that to include a new three-foot-high differential in the top plane of the roof line. That color scheme is, as has been presented in the previous meeting, so it's that dark gray and then almost off-white. And that's the material that we've assembled so far, and I believe that the items for review tonight really focus on section 1003. So with that, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any question or clarification on that before we get started? I do have just one question about the depiction here of the, the graphic. So as I look at the two graphics, there's the full-on front and then there's the oblique. Slight difference, but, oh no, I guess there's not, there are light-colored lines on the light gray there and the oblique one also, okay.
Correct.
So those aren't ribs, what are, what are those lines represented? Are those actually just spaces or what is it?
Those are the joints between the individual panels, right.
Okay, so there's not actually like stripes or anything?
No.
It's just the joints, okay.
No, it's just simply trying to capture the shadow that might occur with, with the proximity of the two panels joined together.
And so the reason that white lines on the light color and dark lines on the dark color is just because they're different shades?
I think that's the case, yeah.
Okay, they're not really. Okay, got it, thank you. Any other questions, clarification? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and proceed. Let's see, what I'd like to do is maybe just summarize where we were last time, just to set a baseline. So in our findings of facts, we had reviewed all of the sections of the land use ordinance that we thought were applicable. We got to section 1002 that talks about landscaping, talks about architectural aspects, and that's where the board had some concerns, we had some questions, and that's where Bill and the applicant went off and took a look at what could be modified. So that's where we're at. So what we're going to do this time, we're not gonna go back through, of course, not through the entire land use ordinance, we've done those sections, we're gonna focus now on section 1002 and the impact that the proposed changes have in meeting the requirements of 1002. Okay, so with that.
1003.
Oh, sorry, is it with three?
Architecture.
Okay, two is landscape, you're right, three. I'm sorry, 1003 is landscape architecture, or landscape, yeah. Architectural design.
Yeah.
Yes, 1003.
Adrian, real quick, so are y'all gonna do 1002 as well? I don't have a vote on 1002.
I, I have in my notes on 1002 that we did talk about 1002 and that we asked the applicant to meet the requirements of 1002, and I got the feeling that wasn't really an issue.
No, it wasn't, and we've updated the site plan that was resubmitted with this package that does show those understory trees.
I missed that if it was, I didn't even look for it, I didn't realize.
It's in the BDF, so.
Okay.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah. And so just that they comply with the requirements of 1002.
So in the upper left-hand corner, the planting schedule has been updated to annotate some understory trees consistent with the requirements.
Yeah, so down with by the new graphics, and I didn't look at that part, I didn't realize it was updated.
So I suppose we should do 1002 since there's updated information.
Yeah, we should, so let's, let's look at 1002 first, that, that planning schedule. Has anyone gone through to look and see if it meets the requirements of the ordinance?
No.
No? Okay.
So I believe the requirement is for four understory trees per hundred feet, and that would equate to 18. We've got that divided among three species.
Okay.
Sorry, Bill, what's the length of the frontage?
460 feet.
460, thank you.
Let me propose something here, if you want to take a look at the table, I'm gonna read off what the requirements are, maybe if you could just check off the table. Okay, so, I'm sorry, what did we just say, 600?
460.
460, so, okay. So for each hundred feet.
460 feet, 460.
Shall be two canopy trees.
Table, I'll read off. Okay, so.
Four understory trees and six shrubs.
So that'd be what, eight?
Yeah, and that's what I think he, Bill said he has. I'm reading item D, required frontage trees.
Which section?
1002, 5D.
Right, and we utilized the combination of new canopy trees and retained existing canopy trees to meet our requirement there, and then similar, in a similar vein, retained existing shrubs who are feasible, and then we've annotated those 18 new understory trees to round out the requirement.
Yeah, I think as our, is where the shrub command was to understories.
Yep.
You, you good?
So. Well, okay, so for every 100 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
It requires four understory trees, and it's 460 feet of frontage, isn't it four times?
For every 100 feet shall contain four understory trees, right.
So isn't it four times 4.6? Or four times 460 divided by 100, which is 4.6. So maybe 18.4 understory trees?
I think 18 would be okay with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what they're.
Yep, 18 total.
Yep. Okay, and canopy trees, two.
That'd be nine total.
Okay, and you got nine there.
Two plus whatever's existing.
Existing, okay. And I know there were quite, were quite a few existing.
Yeah. It doesn't classify them as canopy trees, but three-seater. I don't know what a hophorn meme is.
Yeah, I think when we last reviewed, the canopy trees were met by the existing trees on the site.
Are they?
Between, yeah, between the.
If I recall. And we got six shrubs times 4.6.
27.6.
And there's some existing probably?
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Is the list existing and new or just?
Just new.
Just new.
So he, no, 11. 11 new. 11 new. So you need.
Most existing shrubs in the landscaped areas.
Correct, directly in front of the building and then off to each, to the north of the drive.
The question is, are there 16 existing?
So I think I'm coming up with 11.
11 existing.
That were over and above the 12 proposed. Excuse me, 11 proposed and 12 additional existing to get to the head count. And I can refer back to the photo set that we provided with the submission showing existing conditions. And we've got shrubberies across the front facade of the building, and then hard to determine from like particularly picture three in the photo set, but there's a large grouping of junipers to the, to the north near those oaks that are identified in that planting area.
Okay, I think we're gonna be challenged here to try to figure this out. I would propose that, it sounds like it's compliant, it's intended to be compliant, I would suggest that maybe we just put a condition in that it would be compliant with the landscaping requirements, okay? I think it's, Bill's saying it is, for us to try to sort through it here and count shrubs is gonna be challenging. I, I apologize, I didn't realize that that section was updated also when I looked at it, I thought it was mainly the, the siding. So let's do that, let's just cover 1002 that way, if everybody's okay with that.
Yep.
Right, it seems like it satisfies the rest of the portions of 1002 in terms of variety species and.
It does, it does.
And the, and the distance from the road and whatnot.
Right.
And so it's in the instance of partial, you know, if it's minimum of 100, that there's 160 or something, we just do 1.6 times? Or is it?
Well, it was four, 4.6 times, 460 feet, I would round down.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if there was.
Can't do a partial bush.
Well, even in that case, in most of these, they, if you don't round, it's still met it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you take a portion of a shrub.
I didn't know if there was like, just in general, like a rule of, is it, would we consider that 400 or 4.6?
I like the condition Joe proposed.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion on 1002, as a finding of fact, the application as submitted meets section 1002 with the condition that a plan be submitted that meets the requirements for shrubbery and trees in 1002.
By when?
That's what we have.
Within 30 days.
Well, didn't the plan already?
That's the condition.
He's conditioned.
That's the condition. I think he's got it met, either already or will have it met.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
So let me repeat, if anyone would care to put forward a motion, as a finding of fact, the application as submitted meets the requirements of section 1002 with the condition that a landscape plan will be verified that meets the count for trees and shrubs within 30 days. Anyone care to?
So moved.
Moved by Jan, anyone?
Second.
Second, seconded by John. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor? All right, what we got tonight? One, two, three, four, five, six. Anyone opposed? Okay, 600. So Sam, what, I'm just trying to do the formalizing, I think everybody's together here, we agree, rather than spend the time of trying to go through and count things, we put the condition in there so that somebody at their leisure can go through and count things and make sure it matches, that's all.
Okay.
Just to cover it. I, I don't think there's any disagreement anywhere. Okay, so with that, if we could move on to 1003 now, 1003 was the other item that caused some concerns, and we specifically talked about the roof lines last time and the siding on the building that was proposed. There was discussion about different shapes, forms, lines on the roof, and then there was some concern about the appearance of the corrugated steel siding that would be put on the front of the building, and so we asked if they could do something different that would be a little bit more dressed up on the front of the building. And so that's what was submitted this evening in the picture that we're seeing on the screen now. So discussion on the roof line and siding items in 1003.
It's better. It's better, I think, what happened to the, your idea, Bill, of putting a gable effect on it?
I, I think if, if Scott can weigh in, that'd be helpful. I, I think if, if Scott can weigh in, that'd be helpful, but as I understand it, they, Scott had some architectural concerns about the constructibility of that element and whether or not it would be problematic operationally for them to divert any amount of water towards the front facade and the entry to all those service bay doors. So that was his recommendation as the means of addressing the requirement while still having the highest function that he can develop for the building.
Yeah, and we'd covered that at the tail end of the meeting last time. This is what we had asked them to produce.
Really?
Yes, sir.
I thought we had talked about...
We had talked about it at length, and we got to the point where, where the guy had constructibility concerns, like he said, and we're like, well, if we can just break the roof line and bring it up to the sign height as the original building, and bring it forward just a little bit, that we, that would satisfy what we were looking for. And this is, seems like what they have done.
Really? I must have missed that part.
So let's, let's talk about the roof line first. And so if we refer to the key points in the ordinance here, it talks about in the roof section, long monotonous facade designs, including but not limited to unreleaved repetition of shape, form, or unbroken extension of line shall be avoided. So, shall be avoided, it's not prohibited. This is a little bit of subjective section for the board in being able to determine what meets the requirements here in the roof section. They talk about pitch roofs, colors, roof mounted equipment. So really, I think it's, what I get out of it is, the first paragraph, the point of trying to relieve long, unbroken lines in the building structure. Roof lines should be designed to provide diversity and visual interest. So, comments on that? Okay with that? Other thoughts?
I, I think, I think it's fine because you have the mansard style roof on one on the existing building.
Right.
And then, and then a different building that has a more, so there's a homey look to the building, and then there's a much more industrial look to the building, and raising that center section to break up that line. For me, it meets the spirit, if not, if not the letter of the idea of not having a flat roof. I think that visually, I think it's fine.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that, you know, point two in that section of roofs talks specifically about not having the flat roof on the visible facade from the street. And I think that was what our biggest piece was, and this breaks that. And so I think that this absolutely does what we're asking them to do.
Okay.
I think, I think, um, sorry, Jeff. The previous section, the beginning of section 1003 talks about the harmony between the proposed structure and its neighbors. And I think what they've attempted to do is both in sort of material texture and form, have it be cohesive with the, the former restaurant in the best way that a, you know, an auto store can. And I think that there's a little bit of conflict between that ambition and the requirement for the roof to be prohibitively, like the prohibition on flat roofs, when you've got a building that has a flat roof or a mansard, for all intents and purposes, that those two things are in, in opposition to one another. I think satisfying the previous, the previous section of being cohesive or, or more in harmony is the more important one to me. So I'm satisfied with this resolution.
Okay. John, you going to say something? No?
You know, I like Bill's idea.
Which was, which one?
Do a...
Do the mansard?
Faux mansard kind of treatment on it.
Okay, would you consider this acceptable, though?
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to draw a line on this.
Okay.
It's fine.
Rob, any comment?
No, I think it's fine. And I think the fact that this is the second meeting and we haven't heard from any one in the community that objects to this, I think it's, I'm fine with it.
Okay, I'm also fine with it. I think that breaks up the roof line, which is one of the concerns I had, just a long monotonous roof line makes it a little bit more interesting on the front. Okay, so let's move on then to the siding, and that was the other concern. And we talk, I guess, about building materials, which is further down in that section. Building materials should be treated as significant design elements that define the appearance of the structure, where possible, sustainable, long-wearing, recyclable products. Siding, the use of traditional building materials common to New England, including natural wood siding, brick, or other materials with similar texture and appearance are recommended. Contemporary materials that have the same visual characteristics as traditional materials are acceptable. So that's what it says about building materials. And then above, I think as Jeff pointed out, it also does mention that the new buildings and existing buildings should be cohesive and pull together visual, visually harmonious aspects from both the old and the new buildings. And so Bill gave us some information to show us the texture of the existing building, and we passed around a panel of the proposed new material that would be a metal siding, but with a different texture finish on it. So discussion on that, comments on that? Sam, good?
Yeah, it looks great.
Jeff?
Yeah, no comment.
John?
Yeah. Does anybody look to this linear commercial structure section?
Isn't that for multiple tenants, linear commercial structures? I thought it talked about.
Okay.
Uh, linear commercial structures such as multi-tenant offices or commercial buildings.
So this would not be a commercial building?
So this talks about breaking up facade and architectural interest, design facades with multiple storefronts, which this does not have. Setbacks in the storefronts, which is kind of what they've done here, both with elevation and setbacks or set forwards of the center section.
Okay.
And then focal points.
Yeah, I'm good.
So you're good with it? Jan, any comments?
I'm fine with it.
Good, Rob?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Good with it?
Sorry, linear commercial structures, that'd be like strip mall, basically, kind of.
It looks like that's what's intended for, it's not limited to that, but, yeah.
That idea, but it's, I think it also fits the requirements.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, it's just separately.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so those are the two items that we talked about last time that we raised concerns on. Is there anything else in 1003 that anyone has concerns about? You good? There are no canopies or awnings, and so I think that covers the key sections of it. Okay, hearing nothing. Would anyone care to put forward a motion that as a finding of fact, the application as modified and presented at this evening's meeting meets the requirements of section 1003 architectural review standards?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sam. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so we got 6-0-0.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything, 1004 parking lot design? I think we decided last time that there's not really anything that applies in there. And so if that's the case, we ought to just state that. Anybody have concerns about 1004 parking lot design?
1004, you already voted on.
We did vote on? Okay, okay.
It's just 1002, 1003.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this site plan?
Do you have to do a motion to take the, all of the section 1000 now?
Uh, no, we did them individually.
Yeah, okay. All right, great.
My only other concern is, I guess what I'd like to do is not put it as a condition, but maybe just flag to the code enforcement officer when he looks at it. I don't think we've got enough information here to evaluate access off of Route 1 for trailer trucks. I don't feel like I'm capable of evaluating the access for trailer trucks, and I'm not proposing we put any terms and conditions in there, but I'd just like to make sure that the code enforcement officer does make sure that that section is compliant. And I'm not concerned about trucks moving on the property. All I'm concerned about is trucks being able to easily get off of Route 1 and get into the parking lot.
So, so when this is all done and wrapped up, the findings of exclusion of law, all of that will get passed on to the code enforcement officer, but he will do his own review as well.
He'll review it, and if there is any concerns on his part, he'll see that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, even if we approve what we looked at.
Correct.
Okay, all right, let's find that. Okay, so we went through between last meeting and this meeting, the sections that we thought applied to the site plan. Last chance, does anyone else have any other sections they want to go back and look at for compliance? None on this side? None on this side? John, good?
You're good.
Okay, so then, let's see here. My statement here. Okay, so, as a conclusion of law, based on the findings of fact examined during this meeting and the previous meeting, the board concludes that this site plan meets the requirements contained in the Rockport Land Use Ordinance and supporting documents and is approved with no conditions.
Didn't you put a condition on the...
Okay, there is one condition. Let me restate that. Based on the findings of fact examined during this meeting, the board concludes that the site plan meets requirements contained in the Rockport Land Use Ordinance and supporting documents and is approved with one condition, that the landscape plan be verified to be consistent with section 1002.
Sounds good.
Would anyone care to put forward? So moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jan. Okay, any further discussion on final approval? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, opposed, 6-0-0. Okay, so the site plan is approved with that one condition. Just to go back and verify, I don't believe there's going to be issues there.
Yep. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time and review.
I'd like to thank the applicants for their diligence and kind of satisfying the requirements of the board.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, and welcome to Rochester. We're glad to have your business here.
Rockport.
Rockport, sorry, previous life. Previous life, Rockport. Okay. All right. Okay, so with that done, anything, any other business that you have for us, Orion, this evening? Yeah?
I do not have any other business.
Any other business from board members?
Nope.
Nothing, okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Jan, moved by Sam, all in favor? Okay, 6-0-0, and the meeting is adjourned at 6:18 PM. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Good to see you guys.
Bill, thank the, thank the architect for his, for his work, did his job.
If it didn't get through, and the owner for his diligence.
Will do.
Appreciate his working with us.
Perfect.
That was good.